This meeting has come to order. Today is Tuesday, July 26, 2016. This is a study session for the Prescott City Council. Welcome, and glad you're all here today to help us out in trying to advance ordinance on structured sober living homes. Typically during these study sessions, it's basically to inform the council on the issue. But today, we've already had one two weeks ago where we talked and allowed the council to get a very good understanding of where we're going on the ordinance. And we feel it's a time when we need to get public input and also input from the industry. So with that, we'll start here on our first item. Once we get done with the short brief, then I'll ask for any more questions from the council, and then we'll go to the public. First item, please.
I'll do roll call. Mayor Oberg.
Here.
Mayor Proton Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Lizelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr will be here shortly. Councilman Shiska.
Here.
And Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
You have a quorum. Item 1A, public comment regarding possible regulations for structured sober living homes.
Mayor and council, before we go into kind of the specifics of today's topic, I just wanted to go through a little bit of history for, I think the council knows this, but primarily for the public, as to where we've kind of, where we've come from and where we're at. In September, and this sort of was a couple of slides here, in September 2013, the city adopted a land development code ordinance or amendment that, that sort of for the first time dealt with our group home issue. Part of, a number of things were involved in that. A lot of it had to do with parking and impacts, and also adopting a 1,300-foot separation zone or buffer zone between group homes because of the existing clustering that we were experiencing. A little over a year later, we received our HUD complaint from Housing and Urban Development that our ordinance was, they believed it was in violation of the Fair Housing Act. Although we disagreed with that analysis and we had responded to the complaint, in the meantime, we worked on seeing if there were ways to tweak or revise the land development code that we had previously amended to be more consistent with HUD's view of what the Fair Housing Act required us to do. So we enlisted the assistance of an expert in group home planning, land use planning, and developed the group home report in February 2015, which really gave for the first time an actual sort of data-based analysis of, of the group home situation here in Prescott. A month later, we adopt, we subsequently adopted some further revisions to the group, to the land development code as well as building code, primarily with land development code, which is currently in effect. The two main sort of issues are, there is an 800-foot separation requirement between group homes, and there is also a zoning-wise, we've, we've sort of defined group homes into two types of categories. One is what would be considered more of a traditional group home, one that emulates a single-family type use, where the length of stay is measured indefinitely or in terms of years, and those uses are allowed as a matter of right in single-family residential. And we also defined what are called transitional, we use it to them community residences, I'll use it to them group homes, it's just easier to say, transitional group homes, which where the length of time of residence is usually measured in terms of months, six months, nine months, which is more reflective of the sober, structured sober living type living environment. Those uses are allowed as a matter of right in, in multifamily, because that more emulates a multifamily type use, where it's usually a year-to-year type use, you know, imagine apartments are usually on a year-to-year type lease. That same month, we also, the council also adopted an ordinance allowing, sort of changing the way we enforce our property maintenance code. Prior to that, we had some, a somewhat ineffectual process where if somebody had a property maintenance code violation, it would go in front of a hearing officer, and the hearing officer oftentimes would, you know, things would just sort of never get resolved, and the property maintenance issue would never get resolved. So in lieu of that, or in place of that, we now have the ability to cite a property owner into court for a property maintenance code violation if, and I stress this, if the code enforcement officer isn't able to get compliance after multiple tries. So that gives us a little bit more of a tool to make sure that, that properties are maintained at some minimum level under the city code. And again, the city code maintenance, property maintenance code is probably likely different than most CCNRs and homeowner-type codes that are voluntarily entered into in a, in a homeowner association type environment. That same month, we also received a second complaint from HUD, and this was, that was actually from a, the first HUD complaint was from the Secretary of HUD. The second complaint was actually from an operator, group home operator, again responded to that one with our, you know, our second or amended code. And in summer of 2015, both of those complaints were closed by HUD with no further action. So I think we can take some comfort in knowing that HUD has looked at our current land development code and has, in its opinion, that that code, that those restrictions are consistent with the intent of the Fair Housing Act. In February 2016, the council adopted an amendment to the land development code again regarding legal line conforming uses, reducing the presumptive abandonment from one year to six months in residential, residentially zoned areas. So in commercial areas, a legal not conforming use has to be ceased for a year before there's a presumption that there's an abandonment. In residential areas, that has been reduced to six months. Again, I think we've seen some, some results of that, or we may see some results of that as, as coming out of our recent research that shows that we, you know, our numbers show that we've dropped from 170, give or take, group homes in the city to around 110, 115. So staff is working diligently on confirming that and starting the time clock so that if those uses cease for more than six months, they can't be reestablished unless they meet the current code. In March, in the same month, or a month later, the council then adopted the disruptive properties ordinance. We've talked about that quite a bit, both at the council here as well as the mayor's ad hoc committee. That same month, that ad hoc committee was started up, and it's been acting, it's been working on a monthly basis ever since. So that's kind of the history of where we've gone from 2013 to today, and right now, we're moving forward on this, on the ordinance that is House Bill 2107, which will be codified August 6. In other words, it'll become law about August 6 of this year. And as the mayor said, we, we briefed the council on this last week, and the PowerPoint packet, or PowerPoint deck is in your packet, and I think it may be available for public. It was available on the city website for public review. So, and I'll just go briefly into reiterating what the purpose of any ordinance the city adopts, the purpose and intent. And that, the purpose of this ordinance is to protect the residents of the structured sober living home. That's the primary purpose of any type of ordinance we adopt under House Bill 2107. The secondary benefit from that is that it will also protect the neighbor and community. And the protection is from operators who fail to provide a supportive, supervised, residential, family-like living environment that's necessary to achieve and maintain sobriety. So that's the, that's the focus of any kind of ordinance that the city adopts. And that, again, if you look at it in the big scheme of what we've done so far, this is a piece of a pretty complex puzzle. So again, we're looking at, at the intent is to protect structured sober home residents by law defined as disabled or handicapped, so, and, and sort of as a practical matter from what we've learned, a fairly vulnerable population when, when they're in that first year of sobriety. So, and we're looking at really addressing kind of minimum, you know, from a regulatory standpoint, minimum standards to deal with operators that may engage in abuse, neglect, mistreatment, fraud, or inadequate supervision. That's the real, that's the goal here. Obviously, the framework that we have to work in is, we've got to comply with Fair Housing Act, have to comply with ADA, have to comply with equal opportunity, or equal employment opportunity laws. Our goals have to be to achieve a legitimate government interest. In other words, what is it that we have a legitimate interest in achieving? We actually have, we have to adopt an ordinance that actually achieves those goals, and I think most importantly, we're allowed only to use what in legal terms is the least drastic measure. So if we can achieve a goal or achieve something, we can't overreach, we can't overregulate if we can do it, if we can achieve that same goal with something that's, that's sort of a lesser regulation. So those are the parameters within which we have to work. There, you know, and I'll just say this, and turn it over back to you, mayor, is that we want to do this, we want to do this one time, we want to do this right, we want to try, we want to do what's legally defensible. There's really sort of very little benefit to hyperbole and scare tactics and those kinds of things. We need to sort of temper this discussion, as, as we've talked about before, in terms of what, you know, what can we do that's realistic, that's enforceable from, from a, from a staffing standpoint, not only the number of staff, but sort of staff expertise. Those are going to be factors that have to kind of be threaded throughout this discussion. And, and, you know, so that's why I think it's important to have this public discussion and input from the industry folks as well, because, you know, the good operators are the ones that will likely exceed, will operate in a way that exceeds any of our minimum requirements. I think what we're, we're looking at is the ones, is the maybe not-so-good operators or poor operators that maybe tend to cause some of the problems because of lack of supervision or other sort of adequate oversight, that, that has maybe a tendency to cause the, the secondary detriment to the neighborhood. So that's what we're looking at. We've got to find that balance. We may not be able to achieve every, every goal, because we, again, we have to do this within confines of Fair Housing Act in particular, but we are, we are, I think, on our way to probably being the first city in the state to adopt an ordinance that, that comes out of House Bill 2107. And I anticipate that, you know, after this meeting, we will look at the first, I'm hoping the first week of, or the first meeting, sorry, of September, to come back with some draft ordinance, whether it's going to have all of the details, but we will work towards that first meeting, and the council meeting in September, study session, to, to roll out a draft ordinance for discussion.
Okay, did you go over the, what the law authorizes?
I can certainly do that. Is that slide up, is that slide, is this, are these, are these slides up and loaded, Okay.
Which slide?
Thanks, Mark. Okay, great. Talked about purpose and intent, definitions, I think we, we've talked about last time. Again, I think the, the structured sober living homes we are, we are looking to regulate with city code are the unlicensed homes. If they're licensed by Department of Health Services, then, and they don't, they aren't affected by what, what we do as a city. You know, again, we have, our ordinance for, standards for operation, so this is not a land use regulation, this is really an operational, a business-type regulation, but we have to, certainly anything we do has to comply with, with fair housing laws and ADA. So at a minimum, the statute talks about, or the bill that's going to become 9500.38 allows us to do these three things. Basically, a registry of structured sober living homes. So when we have a business license structure in place as of January 1, that will provide a minimum kind of level of information about every business in, in the city as part of the regulation. This will have, this will require then another layer of detail that, to be provided to the city, including copies of leases, contact, you know, contact phone numbers of, of the, of the operator or, or house manager, and those types of things, copies of discharge plans, copies of house rules and regulations that the, that the, how the operator, operation self adopts, what their supervision requirements are, and we'll look at, you know, what, whether those comply with, with the city code. We're talking about basically 24-hour supervision of house managers, and, and a sort of minimum threshold for what a house, minimum qualifications, I should say, of what a house manager should be in terms of training and experience and those kinds of things. And then, like I said, an operation plan that includes discharge planning or relapse planning, there's a lot of different terms that are used, addresses maintenance of the property, and noise abatement, or, or sort of a broader, broader level, kind of what's their good neighbor policy? What, 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 how, how do they interact with, with the neighbors in that particular area? Because, you know, if you goes back to the Fair Housing Act analysis, these are considered residential uses by the residents. At the same time, as a resident, like any resident of any neighborhood, you have certain rights, but, you know, like I say, you have certain responsibilities to get along and cooperate and, and be a good neighbor. And so as, as a group home, a structured sober group home, what, what is your, what is your practice, what is your policy? How are you going to make sure that occurs as an operator or a house manager? So those are the sort of the three primary things that the statute allows us to do.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions, comments from the council before we go to the public? Councilwoman Wilcox.
Thank you. John, I read through your PowerPoint, and I have a couple of comments. There are a number of places where we propose to require the operators to have policies, but there's nothing proposed in here about the consequences if they ignore or fail to follow their own policies. Is that something that we are allowed to address under state law?
Yeah, I think, and I think we talked, I talked through this, and if not, you know, at the last meeting, not only will the city have sort of minimum, the ordinance have certain minimum regulations or ordinance requirements that you have to follow, and the failure to follow those can result in some punitive action, whether it's a revocation of a permit to operate, whether it's a civil citation, or whether it's some other, you know, some other enforcement type action. But we're also going to look at incorporating the internal policies or rules, regulations of the operation as a compliance requirement under the code. So a failure to follow your own rules as an operator would amount to a violation of the, of the city code. And so those same enforcement actions could be taken.
Good.
And we're talking, and again, we're talking about, you know, visitor policy, we talked about this before, visitor policies, eviction policies, relapse policies, good neighbor policies, those kinds of things. So I don't know if we as a city want to get into creating all the internal working policies for an operation. I mean, I think it's too complex, and I don't think we can really create a one-size-fits-all type, you know, operation policy that's going to apply to every group home in town. I think we leave that up to the operator, as long as it meets certain minimum qualifications, we accept that. But if they fail to follow their own policies, then that becomes an enforcement issue under the city code. So not only is it the specific city code requirements that have to be followed, but incorporated in that will be following their own rules and regulations and policies.
Okay, and then I had a couple of other comments regarding specific standards, to ask whether we could incorporate things as specific as requiring an operator to provide at least two meals a day, prohibiting smoking in or on, near the property, allowing residents access to the home 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and including in their operational plan, a discharge plan, whether the resident is evicted, or they've completed their program, or they voluntarily choose to leave. Those are pretty specific. Can we go that far?
Well, I think the last one, we certainly are going to require some sort of discharge or relapse or exit strategy, whatever you want to call it, as an internal requirement, and set some sort of minimum threshold to at least prohibit the, the streeting, I think is the term that's used, of a resident, to require some kind of alternative living arrangement, whether it's another structured sober living residence, whether it's a hotel, whether it's transportation back to home. You know, one of those things, one or combination of things, I think we can set as a minimum standard. Beyond that, you know, I'm not sure how far we could go, and I will tell you, just kind of, just abuse anybody of the idea, that we cannot force anybody to travel anywhere as a government. That would violate the Constitution travel clause. I mean, you cannot re-force sort of relocate someone just because, you know, they, they flunk out or they, they get evicted from a, from a sober living home. The first one, we're researching that now as far as food provision, and the question I think that it raises is, if a, is a group home truly a group home if it's strictly a rooming facility? In other words, if, you know, the idea of a group home being protected by Fair Housing Act is that it emulates a family. And, and families, you know, if, if it doesn't provide some opportunity for some collective dining or, or cooking, or food production, or processing, or cooking, the question is, is it really a, does it really emulate a family? Or is it more like a, a rooming house or boarding house, which is not, is not protected under Fair Housing Act because it's not like a family? And two, it's not allowed in our, in our, in residential zoning. So I'm not sure if we sort of affirmatively require that there's a certain number of meals be provided. I think there's an enforcement issue with that, just the simple fact of how do you enforce it? But the, the sort of converse is true, that if, if there is no food providing, provision of food or, or opportunity to prepare food, is it really more of a rooming house and therefore it isn't a group home, therefore it doesn't, isn't consistent with our land development code? And, and I think the second, the second issue of being locked out of a, of a home is kind of that same analysis. It's, that is getting more into a transient type, either long-term hotel or rooming house versus a group home. I mean, again, the whole idea of a group home for the disabled is it emulates a family, it is incorporated and into a neighborhood to be integrated into the neighborhood as a, as a similar familial type use of unrelated persons. The far, the more, the more things that you do to sort of stop looking like a family use, the farther away you get from Fair Housing Act protection. So I think we're, we're looking into that. And then there was a, the smoking one, you know, we, I forget how long ago, it may have been the prior council, we talked about a smoking ordinance, regulating even smoking as, as far as regulating smoking even on residential private property, and that, that, that failed, you know, pretty, that just didn't get a good response. And I don't think we can single out, you know, group homes for the disabled or structured sober living, and impose a, a specific smoking regulation on those types of uses, and then not on other residential uses without running afoul of equal protection of Fair Housing Act. So the regulation of smoking is still available for the council, but I think if the reaction is, is not much different than before, I think it's dead on arrival.
Well, I would like to see it discussed because
Certainly.
nicotine is an addiction, and one addiction, maintaining one addiction while you're trying to overcome another one is counterproductive. I'm not an expert, but what I'm told is that it just, it doesn't help the person get past the primary addiction.
Yeah, and again, if, if, if council wants to go ahead and re-raise or want us to bring back the discussion of a smoking regulation in the city, to what extent and to how far we go, we're certainly open to that. We have, we have an ordinance in the can that, that has all kinds of different options in it, but it really got, I think last time, I forget how long ago, it was, it got no traction.
It's in the can, but it's not in the trash can. It's in the harbor.
No, it's not in the ashtray. It's in, it's in.
Councilwoman Orr?
John, I don't know how specifically we want to get, but isn't, I think it's really imperative that we talk about 24-hour supervision. We can require that and require that someone is awake 24 hours a day and supervising.
We, we can talk about that, we can look into that house manager type requirement, whether it's a residential house manager, whether it's a house man, a series or a set of house managers that work in shifts. We can, we can try and impose some sort of you've got to be awake requirement. The enforcement of that as a practical matter is pretty difficult because we're probably not going to be doing 2:00 AM spot checks. So we could certainly require that as a, as a, you know, we can, we can try and impose that as a requirement. I think the only way to really enforce that is if it's discovered after something negative occurs, that the house manager wasn't awake or alert for that. But again, we're looking at sort of minimum standards for house managers in terms of training, in terms of experience, in terms of maybe some length of time in sobriety, and whether it's a residential house ma, a single person who's the, an individual who's a, who's a residential house manager, or whether that, that house manager, how, those house managers sort of work in shifts, we haven't sort of refined to that level of detail yet. But that's certainly something where the house manager is not only responsible for what goes on, but is trained to be responsible and has some sort of, you know, meet some sort of minimum requirements, so it's not just, you're the guy who's been soberest the longest, six weeks, and so you're in charge now.
Well, it just seems that if, if they're responsible for the individuals in the home, they need to know what's happening
Right.
24/7, and it's, I would certainly hope that we would have some type of a clause that would require someone be awake.
Okay.
That's
Mayor Proton?
That's supervising.
Thank you. Here again, John. We've been dealing with this, not for last council, but the council before and the council before, a couple, three, four attorneys before, the whole nine yards. Equal protection under the law comes to mind on some of these issues. I don't want to be running all over town making other residences expected to feed their families. If we truly want to believe these folks are going to be treated like regular families, we're going to put in an ordinance to require you feed your kids twice a day? We're going to monitor their moms and dads to make sure that they come home in time? There's just some questions that I have with regards to how far a reach does a city council expect to go? Then when you want to talk about smoking, the city of Prescott voted for businesses open to the public, but now we've been told these aren't businesses, these are residences, which is different than a business. Businesses open to the public can't have smoking. You know, you can't be with an X amount of feet of a business open to the public, blah, 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 this whole nine yards. And, you know, we strip the private property right from a business, whether it be a bar, whether it be a retail jewelry store, whatever. You know, out of the free market, if somebody doesn't want to come into a shop because it smells like cigarettes, they don't have to. Nobody's holding a gun mandating that they go in there and shop. They do that out of a freedom of choice. Okay, same thing with a restaurant or anything else. So I think you have to kind of tread on some of these overlapping issues, a little bit of trepidation, to be very candid with you, as to, you know, I'm not prepared to sit here as a city councilman and tell somebody I'm supposed to look at as a family. You have to by law, feed your kids this many times because we, the government, said so. Or you've got to be home by the curfew that we set for you, or any of this stuff. I'm, I'm just not sure that was the intent of either HUD or ADA in, in some of what they did. Here again, I notice that we don't have, to my knowledge, they may be out there hiding someplace, somebody from HUD, or Department of Justice, or ADA, to follow what we're trying to do here, and why we're trying to do it, and how far we're going to get.
And certainly, you know, ultimately, this council needs to give us direction as to, you know, where you want to go, and what, what we need to do as a legal department staff is to, is to try and achieve those, those objectives in a legally defensible manner. So I agree with you that we have to be, we have to do this cautiously and, and sort of methodically and analytically, and, you know, we'll, we'll try, we'll try and achieve when we get a somewhat of a consensus or a majority majority of where the council wants to go, we'll try and do those things. But as I said beginning, you know, we may not be able to do everything that everybody wants to do because it's just not legally defensible. And, and we don't want to put the city in, in the middle, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't really achieve any goal or really do any good to adopt an ordinance that, that we're going to get sued over and, and, you know, and lose or get stuck, get held up in court for a number of years. And we've seen that happen in California on similar issues, Newport Beach, Costa Mesa, and all over the country. So it's, we gotta, we're going to be cautious about this to make sure that whatever we do is, is as legally defensible as possible. Does that mean we won't get challenged? No. But we want to at least, you know, make sure the playing field is, you know, to our advantage.
Well, sometimes I think we get bogged down with a lack of common sense as to what's appropriate and what isn't appropriate. I mean, you know, we post speed limit signs all over town, we can't enforce our own speed limits. What makes you think you're going to be able to enforce what somebody does in the privacy of their own home? All right? And at what level does government, especially at this level, have a right to intrude on somebody's privacy to go into their home, tell them how many times a day they're going to eat, tell them what time they're going to go to bed, tell them how long they've got to have a babysitter, blah, blah, blah? And I mean, you have to be rational when you approach this.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Okay, we'll go to the public. Try and limit yourself to five minutes and address all questions to the chair. More than likely, the attorney will be the one that has to answer many of the questions, but direct them to me. So whoever wants to come on down, come on down.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. My name is Sandra Smith, 701 White's Bar. As regards the meals, nutritional support is very important to maintaining sobriety. It's not right for these people to be charging fees to bring people in and then dump them out on the city to support them. So they need to provide some nutritional support as part of their program. Now, how they go about that is up to them. Whether they allow them to bring in their own food and make their own meals, or whether they provide meals, or whether they cater, I don't, you know, that's up to them. How they do it is up to them. But they need to provide nutritional support for the health and well-being of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Smith, Narrows, 405 Park Avenue. And I will say this, this is from watching it. This started during Rowley Simmons' time as mayor for three terms, and nothing was done during that period. And then it wasn't done during Kirk and All's period. And at last, we're starting to get something. And Palladini got these, these ordinances and things from Timby, and one of my best friends put them together there. It's not about, Mr. Larvinson, it's not about doing people in their homes. Some of these people are thrown out onto the street at 6:30 in the morning, 6:30 in the morning, and not allowed to go back in till night. We have to have some regulations, literally. I have had my house broken into and robbed seven different times since Rowley Simmons was elected mayor here. And everything went. The only thing left was a $1,500 couch that's 35 years old that's falling down. I just want to tell you, we have to have some regulations. Mr. Palladini knows this, and any of you that's lived here any length of time. Some of the things that Jean Wilcox said are really right. And what you said about 24-hour watching these people. You could go all over this town, and you go into stores and in restaurants and everywhere else, and honest to God, there's thousands of people here. There are really only three homes here in Prescott that I know of that they're, you know, really watching the people. The rest of them are downtown. You could, you could walk around the square, they're smoking marijuana, they're getting drugs, everything. And this is not a joke anymore. And I think it's really important that we do something that's as strong as possible. This is way out of line. We're a joke all over the country. And when you said Costa Mesa, we have far thousands more people here doing this. And it's just a joke.
Thank you.
My name is Cheryl Barkwell. I live at 2761 Brooks Range in Prescott. And I have a few issues that I'm concerned about, since we do have two group homes in our area. But I need to ask the question, it's only alcohol and drugs? Because we have Gambler's Anonymous, we have, I mean, what does this cover? Just drugs and alcohol?
I think we just discussed that last time. We're going to bring her up.
I looked it up last time, and it only is, is drugs and alcohol, sexual addiction, gambling addiction, and then there's a number of that do not fall under the Americans for Disabilities Act.
Okay. So when we have those places here, how are they governed? We do have them.
Our current city code deals with the number of unrelated people that can live together is, is four, as a matter of right in a single family.
They fall under, they go out of that area?
Well, so, five to 12, depending on the relationship, does, is regulated by the city code, the Land Development Code, and primarily, it's regulated by our building code, which, which limits really two persons per, as a practical matter, two persons per bedroom. So, a three-bedroom house for, for persons that are unrelated would allow really six people. If it is some sort of group home for the disabled, it also allows for some sort of house manager or, or other person sort of.
And they do not have to register with the city, correct?
Well, it's not considered a group home for the disabled. It's simply a group of, I mean, as a matter of law, it's a, it's a, it's a group of unrelated people living together like roommates.
Okay. What if they were drug and alcohol people? Same apply to them?
No, then, then they're considered a group home for the disabled, a community resident. So they are subject to community residence regulations, which primarily for sober living, structured sober living type group homes are limited, at least newer ones, to multifamily zoning. The building code allows for effectively two persons per bedroom plus a house manager. And, and they would be subject to this, this, you know, whatever ordinance that we come up with, they'd be subject to the structured sober living ordinance. The structured sober living ordinance deals with, with people in recovery from drug and alcohol abuse. That's what this particular ordinance is going to deal with in terms of the operational requirements within which the operator has to, can operate. So that's what we're talking about here. We're not talking about whether it's homes for people with sex addiction or gambling addiction. Those are not part of this, of this statute that allow, you know, that gives us the authority to adopt regulation.
So you could have that type of, in your area and not even know it, correct? Because they're not registered with the city?
Well, you know, again, I don't, I can't address the specifics without knowing more. I think the, well, let me just put it this way, if it's, if it's persons who believe that they have some sort of gambling addiction or sex addiction, addiction or something like that, and, and they have noth, and there's nothing, there's no other sort of requirement for registration, like a registered sex offender or something like that, then if they're operating and nobody knows it exists, that's kind of, I think that's kind of the idea.
That's for another meeting, I guess.
Effectively, it's a, is a group of roommates living together who may share a common background, is really, is how we would look at it. But it's not, not as a group home for the disabled.
Okay. The, the other thing, we've talked about the managers with the group homes. And would it be against our requirements to require them in their plan to have a certification person present? As a, you know, if you're a manager, you have to be certified as a, you know, to take care of the, the people in that home. Because I know of a gentleman that who has this certification, and he goes to different places, but he said that it should be that they have a certification. Because, you know, we've had an issue with the manager not answering the door to a police officer. And the officer had no recourse, he just had to leave. So, calling the police doesn't seem to accomplish anything unless we make rules that, which you're speaking of, that if we make conditional rules, they, the police officer will have authority to do something, write up a, some kind of a notice that they've been notified that they're not in compliance, that...
Well, one thing I'll say is that we're working right now with the Outby College to see if we can set up a training, a training program for managers.
Oh, okay.
It'll be a certification process.
Oh, that's very good. Okay.
So I, we're working on that, and I think that's going to be the final part of the, the ordinance, and part of the permitting process.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
And I would just say also, if you've got any future issues, we do have the Ad Hoc Committee on Recovery Homes that meets once a month. I think it's, it's Wednesday or something like that, or, you know, I can get to the second Wednesday, second Wednesday of the month.
Second Wednesday.
Five o'clock. And if anybody has any issues or problems, whether they live in the home or residents around the home, they can come in and we'll try and get answers to any of their issues.
Just, yeah, we have that issue. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Afternoon, Commissioner, Mayor. Chuck Abbott, Abbott Insurance. I was here at the previous meeting with your research team. Wanted to, being in the insurance, there's, that's a lot of money involved in this business from the insurance companies, both from health and liability. And I just want to stress that there's been an independent commission established that comes up with these certifications. CARF, JCO, there's a number of acronyms. And I know Doug Gillum was on the research team, so I'm hoping that that was brought to light because a number, if not all, these complaints are addressed under these certifications. And if these people don't have these certifications, they get pulled. Police reports are monitored, all those things. And if they don't have the certification, that covers a lot of things that you're talking about, that would be a very strong indication that we need to look into that because of the poor business practices that they don't have or best practice type stuff. So I just encourage you to look at that, have that used as a guideline, because a fear I have, I insure a lot of these, and there's some people doing some great work and got their hearts into this, I'm afraid we're going to mess with the good ones and let the bad ones get away. So I think the insurance industry has set a model to set forth these standards, and I think those would certainly be a tool, as you guys mentioned earlier, that you could enforce and monitor. And when those credentials are gone, there's something amok. Thank you very much.
One question for the group homes that are licensed, do they have to meet those requirements you just talked about, JCO and CARF?
No. The outpatient, there's a thing in the insurance industry and the law that I understand between inpatient and outpatient. This is all outpatient care. So everything gets to kind of go under the radar. And that's how these things have come out. So, these independent commissions aren't required, but the insurance companies are soon to move to make them required so that we can, can distinguish the good ones from the bad ones. And, and there's several here in the area that are, have those into place, and I can assure you, those aren't the people, that these people are going to be complaining about. So I, I think it's kind of a proof in the pudding that it works. And I'd just like to make sure the board takes that in consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, I think you had a comment?
Thank you. Mr. Abbott, thank you very much for your comments and being back again this week. In no way do I want to infer that I don't support annual certification and renewal of annual certification. This is trying to get us to where we need to go to ensure those folks that operate drug rehabilitation, alcohol rehabilitation in the city of Prescott meet certain standards. Here again, I'm trying to get over the hump, John, with regards to if we could ban, as a city, citywide, for example, and I agree with you, Jean, smoking is an addictive deal, but we took it upon ourselves to ban that citywide. I don't understand why, for example, we can't look at that as a partial model for what we're trying to accomplish with this. If, if you're going to function in the city limits of Prescott as a business, because that's what it is, I just heard that. Again, it's a business. It's money. It generates revenue. But we're not treating it like a business, we're treating it like a home. Because we've been told by the federal company, called the federal government, ADA or whoever, HUD, that we got to treat this differently than a business, even though they collect money, not like a boarding house because they do this, this, and this. And yet, we're up here trying to grapple with what standard do we want in the city? We went to our college, that being Yabapai, asked them to work on a, coming up with some ideas for a curriculum here in the community as to what we would like to see functioning as a, as a minimal type scenario in the community in order for you to have a so-called legal business in the city. That's kind of where I'm at. I think we need to have annual renewed certification for house managers, okay, in order to function in the city in that capacity. I mean, you have to have a law degree to practice law in the city. You have to have a doctor's diploma to go out there and issue drugs. We have all kinds of things out there for legal ramifications for people functioning as professionals in the city. So, and I don't see this as an industry any different than any of the other industries that I just described.
I think, Mr. Palladini, isn't there a difference between the people that operate a home, which is the business, and the people that actually live there, being covered separately?
Precisely. The, the use of the residence of a group home for the disabled are deemed to be a family or residential type use. The, the operation of that by an owner or a business, whatever you want to call it, is, is a business so that we can require the operator to obtain a business license to meet certain business regulation requirements.
So you should be the one subjected to the certificate?
So, the, 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 the regulation of smoking, for instance, in a business is different than the regulation of smoking in a group home itself. It's just, it's just they're too, under the law, they're just two different kind of analyses. So, in other words, I think that legally, smoking is not a protected activity in any stretch of the imagination. Therefore, you know, whether it's a good policy or bad, smoking could be prohibited in the city of Prescott, just anywhere. I mean, in your home, in your car, around, you know, however. But that becomes a major policy decision. But I don't think you can single out a particular type of residence, in this case, a group home for the disabled, and say you can't smoke in your home, and yet, you can smoke in your home because you're a group of unrelated people or related people. Because it is, it is, it is a matter of law that is deemed their home for the time, for the time period within which they live there.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Mchuska.
Thank you. So with the smoking situation, is the standard that if the business is open to the public, that it is held to one standard, and if it's not, it's held to another?
If it's, if it's a, if it's, I think the difference is a commercial use versus a residential use. I mean, that's, that's the fundamental difference. So, we don't regulate, we don't regulate smoking in a residential use. So we don't regulate smoking in terms of apartments, you know, at least from the city standpoint or from, you know, the Arizona Smoke Free Act. Doesn't, doesn't regulate smoking in residential use type situations. We regulate, you know, smoking in a business type use. But again, if, I think, if, I think there's probably a distinction if it's not open to the public in any way, shape, or form, and it's just somebody in an office in an isolated place, I don't think that the smoking ordinance would apply in that particular instance. But once you're open to the public, then our smoking ordinance does apply.
What makes it a business? I mean, my question is, and I had a constituent ask me this. They said, well, aren't these guys just renting rooms to, you know?
No. I mean, as... I mean, as much as, this is under law, Fair Housing Act, and this is a residential use. These are residents of the home. You know, it's a group home for the disabled. So, I don't think that, I could tell you, I'll do the opposite. I can assure you that if we were to say, there is no smoking in a group home for the disabled, that we would lose under the Fair Housing Act.
Thank you.
Without, hands down.
Okay. Next person from the public.
Hi, Council, Mayor. Anyway, my question, I'm a little confused.
Give us your name and...
Marla Festinies.
And you live, where do you live?
Prescott, Arizona. I'm having a hard time understanding the group home opposed to a sober living. I worked in a group home when I lived elsewhere in California, and we had to be certified. And we had somebody 24/7, every day, watching the clients. Now, we had disabled children. We also had one that liked to set fires. So, I don't think that child could be left unattended. I'm not bringing up anything with smoking. I, that does not pertain. But these are businesses. People are taking money. They've got a home. They're taking money. And they do need help. And they need to be guided. If we were left, even though these were children, but some of them were pretty close to 17, if we let them on their own, they couldn't, they couldn't do it. You need somebody. We fed them. They had their meals. We had to be trained just in case we were assaulted. We had to be trained in case there was any health issues. We had to be trained on everything, on the medications, education, everything. We had to transport them. Actually, I was attacked. There was two, we always had to have two. While driving to one of the child's appointments, I was attacked, so we had to pull over to the road. So, I know that's not the same thing as somebody recovering from an addiction, but if you're grouping it in an ADA situation, which is what I'm hearing, and with Councilman Lamerson stating that sounds like a business, personally, they should have to provide a business license, and they should be checked on, because we had to be. There are safety issues that contain within the household, whether it's a sober living home. I mean, I don't know about you guys, but I have to have my, the smoke detectors, and if I don't, I'm liable for that. I mean, I'm just having a hard time understanding the difference in the ADA grouping of a group home opposed to just people living together as recovering alcoholics or drug addicted. If somebody could answer that, I would really appreciate that.
Let's, let's, and I use the term group home because it's just, it's easier, but what we're talking about in this particular instance is the structured sober living home. It is by definition a group home for the disabled. There are two, there are two kinds, well, there are group homes for the disabled that are licensed by the state, that are licensed by Department of Health Services. Group homes for the developmentally disabled have to be licensed by the state. There are a number of group homes for the disabled that aren't licensed by the state, and that's what we're talking about here. And there are other specific types of group homes for the disabled that may require certain minimum, by way of licensing from the state, require certain minimum types of requirements or operational issues. These are not licensed. These, these are the group, these structured sober living homes are not licensed by Department of Health Services. That was the first bill that Noel Campbell tried to, to run, and it didn't, it didn't, didn't get, well, it got some traction, but it didn't succeed. So, this is a, I guess, for lack of a term, a delegation to the cities to adopt some layer of regulation of group homes for the disabled, and in particular, structured sober living homes, for people who are in recovery from drug and alcohol addiction. We are looking at, again, a house manager requirement, whether it's a shift of people running 24 hours a day, seven days a week, whether it's an in-residence. We're looking at minimum requirements for that house, those house managers to meet a certification-type requirement, some minimum tie, some minimum time in sobriety before a person can become a house manager. That is a really sort of tenuous issue because it triggers ADA issues, it triggers equal employment opportunity issues, so we have to be very cautious about, about that. But from the people I've talked to in the industry, there is that sustained recovery period of about a year where I think a couple of people I've spoken to say that's a reasonable sort of timeframe within which, or after which someone can become a house manager. There are other operational-type restrictions and requirements we're looking into, but primarily it has to do with supervision of the, of the residents. It has to do with good neighbor policies. It has to do with discharge or exit policies, those kinds of things. But, but I have to be real clear, we are not a city department of, we are not a health services department that regulates medical, provision of medical services. These, these group homes, these structured sober living homes do not provide any type of medical service, behavioral health service. They are primarily a residence for people who have a disability. So, if those, if those structured sober living homes cross over and provide some type of medical service, detoxification, group counseling for persons other than the residents themselves, any other sort of treatment, recovery planning, then they cross into that, that licensing arena where they would need to, to have a state license. So, we're really talking about the residential component for persons with this, this particular disability. It is, it is intended, and it is supposed to be that, you know, where these people live and sleep and eat and reside, and, and all of the other services that sort of go with this particular disability are really, it's, the intent is that they, that those services aren't provided in this, in that residential element. That's strictly where they reside. That's why, that's why it falls into a Fair Housing Act protection, because it is primarily their residence for that particular timeframe that they're in that phase of recovery.
Can I, can I continue saying one more thing? I think what your attorney just said regarding coming out of, whether you're coming out of jail, or you're picked up and you're... I don't know how to quite say this. I think there should be some more structure. So, if you're going to bring people into the sober living homes that are going through withdrawals and things like that, you're going to need some medical attention. I think the people that are in the homes, and I think they should be medically trained to handle situations of the sort, so...
Okay. Thank you. Next.
My name's Justin Bachman, and I used to live in Prescott. I live in Prescott Valley now. Hello, Mayor, and Councilmen, and women. So, I'm an owner and operator of this structured sober living here in town. Long story short, over 10 years ago, my family came to me and said, you need help, one last time, and sent me out to a small town in Wickenberg, Arizona, and I've been in Arizona ever since. And I came up to Prescott to transition here, to build my life, and have successfully done so ever since. And I, and I think there's a large part of the recovery community that goes unsung. As an owner and operator of a structured sober living home, I can tell you that I run and operate one of the most structured homes in Prescott. If you talk to anybody in the recovery community, they would tell you that. We want to be solution-oriented. We want regulations. We want people to get help. We don't want untrained house managers. We don't want people getting put out on the street. We don't want crime. We don't want people not getting help that they deserve and need. So, I, I'm, I'm not a voice for the recovery community as a whole, but I'm a voice for, and I, I think I speak for many, though, that we're, we're game. We want to work with you guys to create ordinances that helps everybody involved, within reason. Okay? And I think we also need to come up with definitions, like what is the level of care? Inpatient versus outpatient versus structured sober living versus aftercare? I don't think 24-hour awake staff for all levels of care is appropriate. I do believe structure and guidance is necessary. And I am all for, and I, the classes that have been designed through the Yavapai College, you know, I signed all my house managers up already. We already do everything that the city's proposing, as far as structure, as far as guidance, as far as training, you know? Our women act with integrity and grace. And they come here and they build lives, like I did a long time ago. And I have since raised a family here. I have had two kids here. I have bought houses here, cars here, and created successful businesses. And, and so, I want our talks, because I feel like the dog can chase its tail in here a lot, and I want our talks to be solution-oriented. How do we move forward in a positive manner to be able to create something that's going to protect the community and protect the residences? Because I'll be the first one to admit, if you were to move me into some of the sober livings I know of in town that should be shut down, I wouldn't want to live next to one either. Okay? And that's coming from somebody who is in that industry. So, we need to identify the bad ones, you know? We need to get regulation. We need to get policies and procedures, and, and we need to do it now. And, and we've been game. I've just been sitting back and waiting for some action to happen. Talk is cheap. You know? How are we going to do this? When are we going to do this? And how can we be positively involved? You know? I see a success rate in my industry with my women of over 70%. That's 700-fold of the national average. I've been in operation for four years. So, I just want to plead to you guys to involve yourself with the recovery community as well, and the operator and owners who are out there doing good work every single day, pounding the pavement and making a difference in this world. So, thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Mr. Bachman, what kind of structure do you provide in your homes?
So, there's house managers that are live-in, and they shift out, so it's four days on, four days off, and there's a split shift during the day. They're there during the day, and, but these, the residents, they have jobs. They go out there and they work jobs. They get jobs. They conduct themselves. They go and conduct themselves like any other community, but the structure, so our structure is, you know, at first, they're not allowed their cell phone. They're not allowed their laptop. They're not allowed their phone privileges, you know? Like, we're inundating them into what's important in their life. We don't let them have cars. We don't let them even, I mean, and this is, it gets into a debatable structure, but our women aren't even allowed to talk to men in the community. We eliminate distraction. They're there for recovery. We're not here for fun. Okay? We're not here to be their best friends. We're here to show them how to recover from a hopeless state of mind and body so that they can go out there and never do, do drugs and alcohol again. So, and that's just a little bit out of the structure. They're required to go to meetings. They're required to do community service. They're required to work the steps and be involved in their job. And, I mean, I could go on and on, and I, and I know someone back there that works with me is saying, you're not telling them all the structure, but we're, we're highly structured.
So, Mr. Bachman, what about meals?
So, they receive a food allotment. They get $100 per week for food, and we take them grocery shopping, and they buy their own food, and they cook their own meals. And we also, yeah, so they can get anything they need. We monitor our clients at the supermarkets, so we don't just turn them off. They're not allowed cards. They're not allowed cash. Our house managers are there in the supermarket, monitoring what they're buying, like right there at the register.
So, I'm taking it that that's not the way all structured living homes are run?
No. And it's not the easy way, but it's the way of integrity, and it's one that makes difference in these people's lives. You know, when I was trying to find my way, if you would have handed me $100 and said, go buy groceries, I wasn't buying groceries, you know? So, yeah. So, we provide, they get food.
So, what do you think of the questions that we've been dealing with up here from the standpoint of meals for other structured living situations?
I mean, I, I mean, I agree with the attorney. I don't, I don't know how much you can legally require anybody to feed anyone else, but I believe that just because you're not legally required to do something doesn't mean that you shouldn't be doing it. You know, I, I believe in providing, you know, what we say we provide, you know? I mean, we are transparent, so...
So, from the standpoint of requiring versus the spirit of your business, you are a good businessman, so that's what you do.
Correct.
Rather than the city saying you have to provide this.
Right. I mean, there's also bad businesses that have nothing to do with recovery, you know? And they say they provide one thing, and, and then they don't, you know? How many car dealerships have I been to that they say, hey, this comes with a third-seat row, but then I buy the van and they said, oh, sorry, you don't have the third-seat row? But then I don't go to the city saying, hey, they didn't send, sell me the third seat of the van, you know? It's just, bad businesses are bad businesses. You know, they're going to exist.
Let me ask you this. We've also dealt with the smoking situation up here. What is your, what were you thinking when we were talking about that? And, you know, what is your opinion about that?
Well, our, our clients are, the people that live there, they're allowed a smoking section. Part of the registration with the city that we did, that we mandatorily did and we voluntarily did, we had to submit a plan of our house of where they're allowed smoking, and they, they have a designated smoking area. None of our clients smoke inside, and they don't smoke in the vans, or none of that. I mean, that's just not what we do. So...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name's Tom Kimerly. I've got 50 years' experience with alcoholism. I'm new to the area from California.
Could you put the mic up close to your mouth, please?
I got 50 years' experience in alcoholism. I'm new to this area from California. We've been building a home here for two years, or just finished. We're just moving in. I've seen articles in the paper and heard comments about sober living homes, and I went through alcoholism at Hoag Hospital in Newport Beach 21 years ago, almost 22 years ago. I've been sober ever since. I think sobriety, there's four, there's four ends to people with drug and alcohol addiction. Either you die, you're institutionalized, you're in jail, or you get sober. People that go in and out of these sober living homes that recycle themselves in and out, they're of no benefit to society, they're a drain on society. And so, what we need to do with these places is create an environment that creates lasting sobriety for the people in there. It's not just a place to hang their hat, but it's a place to change their life. Instead of setting minimum requirements, set maximum requirements. Do like the man said, set standards that these people have to follow. They have to go have a job. They can only stay there for six months or a year, or whatever you want to set the time limit. But they have to go to work. They have to feed themselves. They have to clothe themselves. Set examples, or set requirements to maintain the property. Put these people to work on the weekends if they don't have a job, mowing the grass and weeding the yard and planting plants, painting the house. It's all things they need to learn to do to get back into society. You people do it. You maintain your houses. I maintain mine. They have to learn. The people that end up in sober living houses have been kicked out of their own home, they've been kicked out of jobs, they've been kicked out of jail, they've been kicked out of whatever. Their families have thrown them out, and so they need to learn to start over. Their families have thrown them out, and so they need to learn to start over. We can't enable these people to just hang around and smoke cigarettes and do nothing all day. You need to set requirements for the house owner and the house manager. I've been to college courses in, in drug and alcoholism. Like I said, I volunteered at HOG Hospital for 13 years. I had a aftercare group, they went to the 21-day-plus program at HOG, then they came into my group, and some of them stayed there for five years. I changed people's lives, I watched them get married, I watched them get new jobs. And it's an amazing thing to watch people change their life. I changed mine. I drank for 35 years. And I maintain my marriage, I maintained my job through all that period. I, I was a functioning alcoholic, I learned to call it a survivor. But, anyway, I think if you set high standards for people, they will reach it. I think if you set minimum standards for people, then they will get along.
My question to you is, do we set the high standards for these folks, or do the structured sober living homes set the high standards?
I think you have to set them as far as requiring the property owner to be certified. I think you need to make the house managers have at least two years of sobriety and be actively working on AA program. AA is a great program, but it's just the beginning. People need to learn to goal-set, get budgets, and, and function as normal life is. I learned to create peace and serenity as a base of my sobriety, because when I was drinking, I was full of chaos and drama and bullshit, and I don't want it anymore. And so, that's what kept me sober, and still does today. And people can learn to do that, but you have to set higher standards and not lower standards.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
My name is Melissa Thornburg, and I have been a resident of Prescott since 1988. And that was the year that the program that I worked for opened, Prescott House. And I am the director of marketing and outreach for that program. I got sober in 1998, and by the grace of God, hopefully this year I will celebrate 18 years. And it is because of this community that I got to do that. So, I just want to say that. And, living here before I got sober, I served as a bartender at Murphy's and the Girlie Street Grill, and served lots of folks from all different walks of life, and, and so I've, I've seen all sides of this town, and I care about it immensely. And I feel that we can have a win-win if we all work together. And I understand, I understand what it's like to live next to people like me, because I was that person, you know, years ago, and, and now I am a homeowner, and, and I understand what it's like to have your property values and your life kind of disrupted by this. So, I get it. And I got to participate with Mayor Oberg in a focus group last week that was trying to come up with some solutions for the certification that were, that they're going to be offering at Yavapai College. And, and I was asked by the leader of that group, who's in our, in the audience today, to come and talk about some of the best practices or the big ideas that we had as a group to kind of try to come up with some solutions that might work from our team that was in that group. So, I'd just like to read those off if I can. The first one was motivational interviewing as a standard therapeutic intervention for de-escalation, I can never say that word, and redirection of clients. And, and the reason we're talking about motivational interviewing, it's a therapeutic technique, and it's a psychological certification process. And there are ways that we can actually use that in the certification process to help these house managers and other staff members learn how to de-escalate from a very structured perspective, people who are having difficulty in programs. So, that is something that we can, that we can utilize in the certification process. And I would like to say one thing. I, I know there are a lot of people very concerned about people who get ejected from programs. Most of us, most programs that I'm aware of don't specifically, that I've, that I've worked with, including Prescott House, we don't eject people from the program. What we do is we, we have a discharge plan. However, we cannot stop someone who's 18 years or older from leaving the property and stepping off and choosing to go off on their own and leave the program when they are angry about something. And what you all need to know, what the town needs to know, is that this is, substance abuse is, is all rooted in, in trauma. And, and when people are in a traumatic place, they are not, they're acting in their fight, flight, or freeze mechanism. And when they're in fight, flight, or freeze, they cannot make adequate judgments about life. They're acting from a reactive place, and they are not in their executive functioning in the front of their brain. And so, one of the things that we had talked about was creating something like a drunk tank. And there's, we don't, we don't have those anymore, I don't know that they're legal anymore, but there are places like sober centers where you can go, and, and if someone, and I don't know if this is legal or not, but if someone is actually on the street and has left discharged or is using, it is an option for them to go to one of these and dry out to make an adequate decision for themselves. They could be state-funded, or we could find other means to fund them. I'm not sure what that would look like, and I don't want to come up with that. But I would be more than willing to be on a committee that would do so. I am offering my services for that. The other thing we had talked about was creating an ad hoc committee that would come up with community service options that everyone in the community could benefit from, neighbors, anyone. Because we, as a group, have lots of people in our programs that need volunteer services so, to utilize for their service work. Service is the 12-step in Alcoholics Anonymous, and most of us require service work or volunteerism. So, that is something that if we could utilize that within the city by having, working with the city to create some sort of ad hoc committee that would provide those resources, we could do that. And that could include all sorts of things. It could include yard work, it could include snow shoveling, it could include deforestation issues, it could include lots of different things, and it could be useful to our community. So, that's another thing. And, and then, also, let's see, and sober centers are available, you can look up the structure of a sober center online, and they have best practices. And they are all over in different cities across the country. As far as smoking areas go, most places have a smoking area that's offset from any wooded area. It is for the safety of the clients and the safety of the area, but that is something that could be included in the guidelines, but it, it, it's legal for people to smoke. So, I mean, it's illegal, it's legal. So, and then noise fines. I don't know if you're able to enforce those, but noise fines might be something that you might want to consider as well. So, that's all I have, and, and I really, I, I want everyone to come out of this benefiting, and I believe we can if we all work together. I truly believe that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Joe Collings, 258 Rock Ridge Road, Prescott. I just have two things on the ADA issue that I keep hearing that everything has to be per HUD and ADA compliant. I'm hoping that the ordinances tie in ADA to the facilities inside. Being that if you are going to have a group home or what have you, everything meets the ADA requirements for disability people.
Mayor, can we actually go further than that? Recently, our community development department sent out letters to all of the known, our structured sober living homes, or all of our, all of our community residences, informing them that we're, we're starting the process of annual inspections. So, we, our building department goes out, does annual inspections, INgress/EGress, working smoke detectors, making sure that they're not overloaded in terms of the number of, the capacity of the number of people. If there's a need for, you know, ADA access, like ramps, those things, and also checking on, for instance, whether all, whether there's any illegal, you know, unpermitted construction, because that's been discovered in some instances where all of a sudden there's an extra bedroom attached to a house that's non-permitted. So, so that process is, is ongoing, is part of our, is part of our, sort of, that two-slide kind of left-to-right arrow. That, that process is part of our building code, is that we're doing, we do annual inspections, just like we would do, and these are health and safety inspections for, for any, any community residents for the disabled. So, we have that process in place. And, again, the whole idea is to, is to protect, you know, this vulnerable population, to make sure that, for instance, there's added INgress/EGress in case there's a fire, so that there's not furniture-blocking windows, or if it's a two-story, that there's a way, you know, that there's, there's proper, you know, escape ladders and those, escape routes and those kinds of things.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mayor.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you're, like, ADA accessible bathrooms, ADA accessible kitchens.
Right.
All the doors are 36 inches.
Right.
That, I think that's what he's implying.
Right.
And a lot of it, just, a lot of it, and I would have to defer to our, our building department, but it's going to depend on whether, you know, whether that's required or not for that particular use. You know, and so, it's, it's going to, it's a case by, it's a, it's a house-by-house or a case-by-case look to make sure that if there is a, a compliance issue, that those things, those issues are addressed by the operator.
I tend to agree with this gentleman here, that if we are, if we keep using HUD and the American for Disabilities Act as what we're trying to comply to, then myself, as when I go into a commercial remodel, I'm required by law that, that I can form that remodel to the Americans for Disabilities Act. That requires hand-grab bars, that requires every door to be 36 inches, that for every ride, you know, quarter-inch ramp for every riser isn't a step. So, I don't know, it's something we should look at, maybe, John.
And one last thing. On the supervision, I would suggest that you put in there that you have whoever the supervisor is that's on board during the 24-hour cycle, that the police department has that information, because you read in the paper, all these calls that they go out, and nobody answers the door, they have nobody they can reach out to. So, I would think that you would want to have these managers' names and phone numbers so that you can reach out to them if there is an issue there and nobody's answering the door at a facility. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name's Erin Bachman. That was my husband. I'm the one that was freaking out about the structure. So, I lived in Prescott before, and we live in Prescott Valley now. I too came out here for recovery. I'll have eight years sober in September. Obviously, had two kids with him. Our kids are in school here, homes, cars, all that stuff is what we've done here. I mean, honestly, being in here's been a bit frustrating, because I think that people giving their two cents that have no idea about addiction is really just kind of ignorant, you know? And I think that we, as a community, can come together, is that you all know the laws, and then the recovery community know about recovery. I don't, I don't know about laws, you know, I know about recovery. And I, and I think that we're really talking about a lot of issues that don't matter, like the door has to be this size, or this and that, and I just think these things are all irrelevant. People are worried about smoking, and to be honest, in those places that that's happening, the owners are terrible. They're terrible. What house manager doesn't know to check an ashtray to make sure it's not on fire? That's about supervision. It's about integrity, it's about quality, it's, I, I don't know, I, I agree that there's a ton of sober livings in town that are not monitored properly. I think that house managers get jobs early and think it's great to drive around in a white van, and, and they can't even stay sober themselves. I mean, that's, that's the truth of it, and I'm a business owner in the recovery community, and I feel that there's a big issue. But we can sit around and we can talk about the issues all day long, but if we're not addressing the owners, and the owners aren't getting off their butts and going into the housing and know what's going on, because guaranteed, there's a lot of owners that couldn't even tell you what's going on in their housing. That's a fact. And, and being an owner that does care, that is on the phone till 10 o'clock at night, 11 o'clock at night with house managers, what's going on? What's the client doing? 24-hour supervision is going to do nothing, nothing. It's just not going to do anything. It's a waste of your time, it's a waste of my time. And honestly, it can be done in, in a better way. There's, there's a way we can come together, there's a way that we can hear what the community is saying, but I just, I just think we're going at it the wrong way. I honestly don't feel that, I mean, I think this is great, I think the house manager thing is really incredible, because they need that training, they do need that training, but, you know, it's a bigger issue than that. It's, it's just such a bigger issue. The smoking thing, I think that's great, but that's, that's not going to fix it either. Let me see what I wrote down here. I, I don't know, I, I just started thinking about, you know, somebody had commented earlier, you know, why are these people being kicked out? It's like, if somebody in your house chooses to bring drugs in, are you, are you going to let them stay there, or are you going to kick them out? And that's really just kind of throwing it out there so that we can play devil's advocate here. You know, and not to mention that there's a lot of teenagers in town, too. I think it's really a convenient thing for the community to blame it on the recovery industry. And we're a big target, and we've caused a lot of issues, I, I understand that. But there's a lot of teenagers that are going up and down the road, even in my neighborhood. I live in Prescott Valley. It's not because of the, the rehabs. You know, what specifically are we wanting to get certified in? If the house manager training happens, I think that's really incredible. Like I had just said, I don't know, my, my big thing is that people with addiction need to be helping make these laws, and that it's not just a bunch of irritated neighbors, because I'll tell you about the neighbors at one of our facilities. We reached out to her, we went next door, introduced ourselves, the owners, we're the owners. And we, we shook hands, let her, gave her our numbers. We immediately started getting harassed by this woman, just so that you guys know. We did nothing, absolutely nothing. So, I think that it's really important that if the community is going to be, you know, pointing out these issues, they need to be willing to look at their issues as well, that this is a big irritation and resentment, kind of like what's going on in the rest of the world, but we don't even want to get into that. You know, but it's like, since when did we stop working together? You know, and I just think that we are just going over and over and over. This has been going on for years. And, let's see, the whole cooking in the house, moms and dads don't always cook in their family. I don't cook, I guess I'm a terrible mom because of that, the husband does. You know, but I mean, the reality, you can't, you can't force people to do that. We're, we're focusing on issues that do not matter. You know, we need to focus on what the problem is, and it's supervision, you know? And I just think accountability is a big thing, you know? And you cannot practice, you cannot practice something if you don't have it, and I think some house managers are hired to fill a role, and they've got owners or supervision of people who couldn't tell them how to supervise anybody if their life depended on it. It's just like if any of you guys have a boss, are you going to want to listen to a boss that doesn't know what they're talking about? Are you going to want to listen to somebody who, you know, I mean, we've got to have better leaders that are practicing this.
You've got 30 seconds left, so...
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Let me just go ahead and just say a couple of things here very quickly, because it's been brought up by a couple of folks, and I think people have to understand, we see this as being a collaborative effort between the public, you know, the city, the industry, the clients, you know? We all have to be in this together to try and make this thing work and do the best thing we can for the people in recovery and make sure we have the best outcomes. You know, when I hear about, you know, 24-hour, you don't need that, well, I can tell you, the last ad hoc committee, we had a gentleman that came in, he was a client, and he told us that he had a situation where he knew when the house manager went to sleep at nighttime, people left and went out and got drugs, came back in and used them in the home, because he was asleep and he wasn't managing it. So, there's got to be some way to work around that. And also, as far as having some kind of a, I don't want to use the word halfway house or whatever, but, you know, I, I do know that NARA sometime back was talking about, you know, for people that relapse, maybe break rules or whatever, and need to be removed from the home, that there's a, a place that the industry would set up where the person could go, and they could be evaluated to see whether they need to go into detox, whether or not they could be put into another program, or maybe if they just plan, plan, we're not ready to even go through rehab, to start looking at trying to get them to go back home. So, you know, I think there might- So, you know, I think there might need to be some kind of facility like that, and I think the industry needs to step up and, and give us some answers on how they think they might want to do that. Next person, please.
Yes, my name is Brad Royce, Prescott, Arizona. Back in 1988, the first homes opened here and I was working at the Superior Court and we had a really good handle on the situation for a while. By 1999, I noticed things got, probation officers were being threatened by county peoples to keep their mouths shut about different things. By 2003, 60% of my department resigned in protest regarding the halfway houses, because back then, if someone came here on probation or parole from some other state, they instantly had to check in. That virtually disappeared in 2004. We've had hundreds and hundreds of people from other states on federal probation and parole come here and hide out until they relapsed or either died with no one checking on them, not the Prescott Police, not the Sheriff's Office, not DPS, not the, not Bruce Saplone, the FBI, not the Sheriff's Office. These guys have been, it's just like the hole in the wall. They come here and they're violating state and federal law on a daily basis on probation and parole. They're not checking in here, and that's very, very serious. Explain that to me, any of you, how that happens on a daily basis. It's been happening since 1988. We had a good handle on it until 2003 and we've had hundreds of them come here, again, violating federal and state law, hiding out here. And when they are, when someone does run a record check, find out something about them, they're just taken back to the house, no ask, no questions asked, probation department looks the other way, and it's been going on for a long, long time. Any questions?
So, Brad, is this federal, state?
I mean, federal, state, county.
Okay.
You rob a bank for, for drugs, they send you here to rehab, but they don't check in. They're supposed to instantly check in with the state of Arizona. Up until 1999, across the street, we had marshals, federal judges, but they all left. They all went to Flagstaff and Phoenix. But now the bad guys come here, hide out here, and they love it here. I had a call Friday from a gaming commission, most organized crime in this area are going to have their annual fight, and they were required to get a license, but that was overlooked the last six years in Chino Valley. And those guys supplied drugs to this area since 1999, meth, heroin, coke, pot, plus the pharmaceuticals. They love every doctor in this town.
So, who's dropping the ball?
You guys.
We are.
Fed.
Really?
State, county, city. I've, I run, every day, I, I work out at a gym, I go to the store and I, and I go have coffee over here and I hear these kids bragging about how they're here, but they haven't checked in. They're living in a house, but they're not here legally, they haven't checked in with probation or parole, hundreds of them.
So, are you saying that we should require parolees to...
It's a federal and state law. It's a federal and state law.
If they're in parole, right, if they're, are they, I mean, have they been assigned to come here?
I met quite a few from Texas that a judge was ordering them to come here, register, I mean, check in with a house, but don't tell them they're on probation or parole. Up until just a few weeks ago at the YMCA, no names were required. They didn't even have to have IDs to come to the Y and work out. It's pretty bad, real bad.
What would you suggest?
The parole officer that was here, again, in 1999 and the marshals, officers, they were all beamed away. They're not here. He comes down once a week from Flagstaff, he sits in his office and waits for them to come in and report, but they don't. One of them lived out in Chino Valley, he was on federal probation since 19, no, I'm sorry, 2003. He died a year and a half ago. He was one of the top Hells Angels, didn't check in. But he was going to the VA and he was going to these halfway houses buying and selling drugs all the time.
And we say halfway houses, you're talking about the drug recovery.
All of them.
Yeah.
Did anybody follow Marla Davis's case recently? Does anybody know what happened to that case?
No.
Marla Davis, Guidance Clinic, 200 clients, selling heroin and meth to them. Did anybody follow that? It's because it was covered up.
Saw something about it in the paper.
Very little.
Yeah, very little.
Very little.
You know what, I'm glad you're here, I'm glad you're speaking up. Right behind you is our new police chief and she's listening very intently.
I know, I know. See, in Maricopa County, they have details with the probation that go around. We, we will never have that here. They've had that down there for 20 years? 20 years they've had teams of probation and parole officers going around and looking for guys that are hiding out, but they're here in Yavapai County, hundreds of them. I've dealt with hundreds of them. Even when I worked at the Superior Court for 15 years, I dealt with them. When they'd come in, I'd make them, when I had them in the jail, I'd make them, I said, you have two choices, register or go back to your state in shackles or just go back on your own and turn yourself in. Now, it's completely broke by 2003 here. That's why we've had, what, six chiefs since then?
What happened in 2003?
2003, like I said, 60% of the Superior Court resigned in protest because they knew about the doctors doing the medications, the pharmaceuticals, they knew how the halfway houses ran with their attorneys, with their lawyers, with their judges, they knew they could get away with it here. That's why we're number one in the nation. We've been that, that way for, what, eight years now, number one. Malibu is closest to us, they have 35,000 people, only 30 halfway houses. We hit 200 halfway houses with 40,000 people.
So, are you saying that...
Insurance fraud too.
No matter what we do here, talking about an ordinance, that unless we get that cleaned up, we're still doomed?
The stand-down issue's been, has come down from the top, from the feds. I, I've probably made 200 calls to DEA, ATF and FBI in the last two years, and they refused to even come here to help. All of them ask them, call Bruce Saplone, he was assigned their case in August of 2010. He's a young FBI agent. Call Mike Smith, DEA, ask them why they won't come here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Brad.
Okay, thank you.
Bobby Coxwell, Cod of, on Thumbute Road, that's all I will say. And I'm a longtime resident here and I feel in my heart, 40, I've been here over 40 years, and on Thumbute Road, we've been taken over from Grove Avenue all the way to Thumbute Road, with rehab houses are drop-offs. And I can tell you on a Monday morning, sometimes on Friday, and they go over across the street to Fry's Shopping Center for meetings, and these, there's cars every place, and the kids walk right across the street, you have to slow down for them to let them out. And I feel like our community is overwhelmed with rehab kids. I do a lot of volunteer and I'm all, all over town, and I can tell you on Campbell Street, Lincoln Streak, all in that area is, all you see is white vans all over. And I went to Fry's just last week about 4:30 and I was afraid to walk down the aisle because there'd be these three big guys, nice-looking kids walking side by side, and I had to get out of the way. And I asked the lady as I checked out of the, at Fry's, I said, what is going on? I said, this is the most I've seen in a long time. And she said, well, this is when they come in and they do their grocery shopping. And there was four lanes at the very end that she says they check out with their food stamps. And I have a learning disabled son who I've raised here and that's why I came here. And I know that I've had to look after him, he lives on the property, and I've had to look after him all his life, but to be overtaken by young people to come here for our town and some of them I know stay here, and I feel for these kids, because I have a son that I'm looking after. But I think our town is overwhelmed and we've got more rehab kids per capita than probably any of these 10 states or 10 cities that the kids are doing rehab. And I know we were, he said number three or number one, but I think we've got, we have taken many more than we should ever have according to the population of our city. And I'm very sad and it's, it's terrible when you go all over town and I see them walking on Gil Gardner Way, they are all over the place. So, there's a problem someplace with what's been going on and it's reached an epidemic as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Well, Mayor Oberg, thank you council for allowing me to have a voice today. I want to try to be the voice of reason.
Name for the record.
A little closer.
State your name for the record.
Steve Emery. Internationally certified master addictions coach, certified life coach, student at NAU, member of the National Association Alcoholism and Drug Abuse Counselors, member of the Northern Arizona Recovery Homes Association, and on several committees in town, including, I'm the Treatment Facilities Committee Chairman for the local intergroup office of Alcoholics Anonymous. So, there goes my anonymity, I guess, huh? I am a product of Alcoholics Anonymous, I'm also a product of Prescott recovery community. I am certified, I am credentialed, I am a member of numerous committees and, including AZRA and NARA, as you know, Mayor, we've seen each other a bit. I was at the focus group last week at Yavapai College, and I want to piggyback with Justin here, we're just trying to be part of the solution. And we do understand that we've got this big bucket of apples and there's five or six really rotten apples in there, but we can't throw out the whole bucket because of that. That, that's just not rational, that's not logical. We, I operate, I, I'm also the owner and program director of one of the cash-based structured sober living facilities that we're, is the topic today. I do not bill insurance, I'm not licensed by the state. And, and this is what we're talking about today, structured sober living. That's my company, that's what I'm doing here. Our house managers are live-in, they're, they're onsite, they're credentialed, it's peer support. They've got X amount of, of time sober, they've got an understanding of the program, they've been trained, they, they sign under a code of conduct, a code of ethics, of, our program itself goes by pages of, of policies just to get in. Whether it's the discharge report, the code of conduct on and off the property for the staff and the client. Just pages, the, the smoke alarms, the fire detectors, all of those, we do pages, a checklist on that. We're one of the people, one of the organizations in town that want to work with you, and we want to work with the public here, because like Justin, I could imagine coming here to retire, and I know this is a retirement community, and moving next door to a house that has no supervision, and like Erin said, this is a supervision problem. And it starts from the top of these, these owners and directors and the people that they have, you know, staffing their homes. I'm really excited that we got to, to get involved with Yavapai College and, and start getting, I want to even be an instructor, because I've, I've got tons of credentials, I've got list of credentials, anger management credentials, a life coaching, recovery coaching, life coaching, addictions and gambling, food addiction, I've, I've, I've got certifications and all that, I'd love to be part of that curriculum. But I'm just here to be a voice of reason that I think it's obvious that there's some bad apples here in town. And the people we have back here in the recovery community, including myself, we know who they are. We're the ones that put these policies together that you see up here years ago before today started. We're the ones encouraging the council to get on board with us as members of NARA and AZRA, and let's get some regulation going, and let's get this house managing curriculum at Yavapai College going. So, I just want to thank the people for coming out here and frustration that are part of the community, I understand your frustrations, I do. And I sympathize with them. The law enforcement that we work really closely with, thank you, been amazing. But I also want to, and I'm not going to throw any names out here, but when it comes to not only, you know, city officials, but also, you know, probation, you name whatever field in this community, I will, I will tell you, there's many, 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 many people in this community who are in recovery, in long-term recovery. When you go to get your car washed, when you go to eat at restaurants, when you go to stay at a motel, anything you do in this community, you're being served by, by people that have gone through programs like my own. And living a life of integrity and grace like Justin and Erin's program mandates, it's part of their mission statement, to walk with integrity and grace, responsibility.
30 seconds.
Yeah, I just wanted to come here and thank everyone to come out. There's one thing we all have in common in this room, whether you're on the frustrated side of the public or onsite trying to advocate, you know, recovery, there's one thing we all got in common, man, we're all Americans. So, let's come together like Americans and be the American human family like we are, and let's just come up to some common rational solutions. Thanks.
Thank you. Next.
William Bryden, Prescott, Arizona. Concerned citizen about this nagging, ongoing problem. Mayor Oberg, how you doing? You and I, Prescott Evening Lions a few years back, Councilman Lamerson, Councilman Blair, and to the other distinguished members and city employees of this great town that we call Prescott, I was up till the weed hours of the night working at a business. I've been in Prescott for 75 years, so I'm a little tired, but I'd really like to be here today. I moved to Prescott 16 years ago because I knew it from Yuma. I kind of fled Yuma, nothing against Yuma, but I kind of fled Yuma to come to Prescott because I wanted to be in the best town. And now with this and with some of the other lawsuits, we're going to have to make up some ground so we can get to that special place that I moved to 16 years ago. Number one, I'm the author of the book, One Foot in Hell, An American Addiction Story. My memoirs, okay? So, I'd like to say to anybody in recovery, give yourself a pat on the back, and to you folks that are actively in a, whatever they want to call it, I call it a drug and alcohol treatment facility, give yourself a pat on the back because sobriety is so achievable, you just don't know it yet, but you got to keep trying day in and day out, and then you'll be an achiever. I do call them a drug and alcohol treatment facility, or better stated, a severe behavioral health unit, because I did it, I was a hippie, I did alcohol, habitual marijuana, cocaine, and I tried a lot of the other stuff too. And in my mind, this is not jet science or brain surgery. I had an opportunity to work for NBC Sports Global and National Telecast, and of course, Murphy's Law would kick in 15 minutes before the national baseball game of the week, and our engineers would just look at each other and say, this isn't jet science, let's go after it and get it done. And it's amazing what can be done in 10 minutes when the opening of the show is at stake. Lot of sickness going on here, all right? I know how sick the clients are, I know how sick some of the managers used to be, and how sick some of the ownership used to be. It's called peer support and it just goes from one level to the next. Now, hypothetically, if that's the right word, if all of you went in for a couple of days and did some heroin, in a couple of days you'd come out and then you'd realize the sickness that's going on here. So, it, it needs to be treated like severe sickness. So, when it comes to that, I say not treat it methodically, analytically conscious or cautiously treat it responsibly. And I put the homes or the drug and alcohol treatment facilities, because that's what they are, if somebody's in a sober living home and they're trying to get help, it's a treatment center, because they don't want to go out and start drinking or whatever. So, they need to be put under a microphone, microscope. And I'm surprised that that right there isn't already done, I really am. Because I've been here, I've been, I had the book out for three years, I'm writing another one on self-recovery from obesity, and self-recovery really does work, folks, you ought to try it if this system doesn't, but I recommend anything that you can get your hands on to get well. this system doesn't, but I recommend anything that you can get your hands on to get well. So, there needs to be total and thorough documentation of the facilities. There needs to be a hundred percent supervision. They're not well. They might be in denial, but I'm not, I got well, it was, it's great. I've been back to having beers and watching San Francisco Giants games, and I know that's wrong, but the ownership and the management of the homes, that's their number-one deal. They need to be responsible for these guys. And when I go to Fry's at eleven-thirty at night and the white vans pull up, and I'm hearing blank, 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 F this, blank, 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 I'm saddened, because where's the guy saying, hey, guys, keep it down? And I feel for these respectable citizens in here, the homeowners that have to put up with this stuff. But if you have total responsibility by ownership and management, it'll start coming down, and you'll get less complaints, and you'll like that, because we live in a special place. As far as the rehab process and discharge planning, that's from day one. They go in there, okay, you're gonna, you're gonna do this. So anyway, don't want to go on and on and on, but I have to say, what would Vince Lombardi and John Wooden do about this? You know they get a rope on it really quick. So.
Yeah, thirty seconds.
Number one, I feel for the city of Prescott. I guess before that, I feel for the clients. I really do, because I know what they're going through, and I know what their house managers are going through, too. And it's a sad situation, but if they can get help, that would be wonderful. So, the regulations have to be rigid, and as they said in Apollo thirteen, failure is not an option. So I just ask the city to get after this, let's get it done, and let it go away, and we'll all be better for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, do you have a comment?
Not now.
Okay. Uh, we got time for one more, and then we're gonna close out. Don't, don't bite over.
I've been sitting here for, all through the whole meeting, letting everybody go first. I'd like to say one word.
You want to say one word, and then I'll, I'll wrap it up?
I'm Byron Langdale. I've been in Prescott since nineteen fifty-eight. I live at, on Delano Street, West Delano. This guy over here is my neighbor, so hello, guys and gals. I feel like uh my little complaint isn't worth even speaking about now, since I've heard all these other people, but since I'm here, I'll relate it anyhow. I live right across the street from one of these homes, and as far as I know, everything goes pretty well there. I haven't had any problems except for one thing, they won't bring their garbage cans in, and they got four of them, sitting in a row on the street, and they don't understand how to space them. And I've tried to explain it to several of them, but of course, they come and go, so we've got different ones all the time, so they, they don't understand it either. So I'm tired of trying to keep it, keep it straight. Uh, I don't, I, I just would like to say that maybe it'd be a good suggestion if, if these types of homes had to have a dumpster, or at least one of those big garbage cans, something that's uh more conducive to that many people. And that's, that's, that's my total, okay? I'll just get out of here.
We'll take that in consideration.
I don't know if you can even do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I think the big thing is having responsible house managers.
That's right.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Hi. Can I step up?
Yeah.
All right. Hi, I'm Molly McGinn. I live here in Prescott, sixteen-twenty-six Sky Trail, and I'm the managing partner for Treehouse, which is a college community for young adults in recovery. But I'm very, and so we're not a treatment, and we're not even falling under the regulations as structured sober living, but, um, but I have been really interested as part of the recovery community, and as part of this community, and, and my, we've had a home here since the seventies, and I went to Friendly Pines Camp, and so I'm, I'm a local. But I'm really interested in the opportunity here, and, because I think there's been a big gap in perception. There's been the, the public and the residents who have really been afraid, I believe, of many of the homes and the perception, and the behavior and the language, and all of that is, has really created a perception of kind of demonizing the, the homes, and, and, and casting a sort of stereotype on them. And the, the big gap is that on the other side, for those, those that are involved in the recovery community and in treatment, is we really all, I would, I would say probably all, think of ourselves as the good guys. And many of us have, like Justin and Aaron were talking about, and others, and Steve, we have a, a very, very high-functioning, very good track record at creating very, very responsible uh recovery experiences, and people have, and treatment works, we know this. Addiction is a growing and rampant disease, and we really need highly competent organizations to be able to fight it. And when we do well, it changes everything. It changes everything. We've had students go on to med school, we've got some graduating from law school, we've had two internships at the White House, et cetera. We've had students graduate and they're flying planes in China now, they graduate from Riddle, and now they're opening twelve-step, you know, they're, they're running like AA meetings in Beijing. You know, it's just, it's global, phenomenal, transforming lives. And I think that's one thing that, that, so the gap has been very much, I think there's a reality to the perception, I'm not saying that's not true, and I think, but I think what we're hearing from Justin, from Steve, from Aaron, from others, is we want to be part of the solution. And we've got people really interested. We invited, you know, thirty-two treatment owners and house managers and others, and Mayor Oberg, Allison Kay, others came, and they came together in, just very actively to start to be really thinking about the solution. So I think that that's the seat, the seat of the solution is, it's not a one-and-done, it's not going to be, we're going to pass this ordinance, and everything's going to be hunky-dory. I think it's going to be a long process, and I think many other good things can come that we, that we can't even yet imagine. And I know I'm an optimist, but I come from working with global companies and transformative experiences for eighty-five thousand people in some organizations. So I believe that we've got incredible talent here, both on the city side, on the resident side, and certainly in the treatment industry, some of the best in the country, if not in the world, is here. And people want to get this right. It makes, it makes it better and safer for our, for our clients, uh, and when they get recovery and they head back into school, they become very much net contributors into the society. And if we don't get it right, we end up with, you know, this kind of a mess. So I think we're very willing, very interested in coming to the table to help with the solution. And Mayor Oberg's really reached out and, and started to bring the leadership that I think no other community has even tried to do, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, it's been an interesting afternoon. We've heard a lot, we've run out of time, so I'm going to adjourn the meeting, and we'll start our voting meeting in ten minutes. Thank you for coming.